And I call this meeting, work meeting for the Bell County Board of Commissioners to order. Do we have any new employees to introduce? Seeing none, any ideas for future work meeting topics? Seeing none, let's move on to our community center update, Dave Engel. Welcome, Dave.
I think Diane is throwing up a PowerPoint quickly and thanks for having me. It's been a while since I've been in front of the county board, happy to be here, good to see everyone. I want to take a few minutes just to give you a little background on the YMCA. Ultimately, the reason I'm here is I want to introduce somebody today. We're presenting, taking around town and introducing him to folks and I definitely wanted to have him introduced to you as, as the county board, but you know, I, I look back, well, we really haven't talked about this project very much at the county board level. So I wanted to just take a few minutes real quickly to just give you a sense of where the project came from and where it's headed and how it's changed before I introduce Steve to give a little bit of information about the project. Thank you for this, Diane, by the way. So take yourself back about three or four years ago and it was approached or 2019 by Sanford Health. And they asked the question, if you had $10 million, Dave, what would you do with it? And at the time I said, I talked about the Hingle Children's Fund or the grandchildren's fund and none of those were resonating. And we started talking about a wellness center and, and we have multiple iterations making this happen. And, and at, at the time in 1819, it ended up getting shelved. And so there was a change of leadership at Sanford and Susan Jarvis took over for many of you remember Susan. And at about 2021, she came to me and said, Dave, we want to reengage and we want to start it up again. Will you help us? And I remember at the time we talked a little bit about, well, I will. Uh, one, I want it to be, are you open to this being private led and private driven? Uh, and she said she was. And then secondly, we talked about, are you committed to that location and at the Sanford Health or will you be considering? Would, would you be open to a different location? And she was. And the reason I did that is really what we're looking at here on the screen is, is the rail corridor. I knew how important this rail corridor is to our community. Uh, it was, uh, has been talked about for I believe 15 years at the city level is a critical issue and an opportunity really. 26 acres contaminated property in the heart of our community in the Bemidji area. And what if we could do something? The question we had in our mind was, is it possible to do something that would clean up the rail corridor? Increase private sector development, increase the tax base, bring a wellness center to our community and so on and so forth. And is it possible? And at the time we're going all along real nicely because everything turned out to be yes. I mean, it looked like it was possible. First out, we found out the site was suitable, uh, that it is possible with cleanup and, and infrastructure to do it on that site. Secondly, uh, the community clearly needed it. Uh, Sanford did an enormous amount of public input and the, and the input showed that there was a desire in this community for, for some kind of a wellness center, uh, if you will. Greater Bemidji's, uh, work at that time was the commitment was to raise $15 million locally. And we were able to raise nine million with just our pace center campaign, an indication of the desire of people for this facility and some kind of facility. So that was going great. And we were able to also recruit Kraus Anderson Development, not construction, but development to look at building mixed use development on property, in fact, upwards of $90 million. And, and at the time, uh, the council very much supported the vision. And so all of the things are going over real nicely until about a year ago now, uh, Sanford came to us and said, oh, let's hold on. Uh, and while their commitment of their $10 million gift was still there, their interest in owning and operating a wellness center was not, and they wanted us to look for other options. Because of that Kraus Anderson Development said, well, we don't know what you're building now, so we're not sure where in. So it became this, as much as it was built up, it started being dominoes the other direction. And thankfully our board and Commissioner Carlson's a member of it, took the lead and said, we're going to figure this out. And it really has been a massive effort for us truly to figure it out. And what I think what we've learned over the last year is that issue that Sanford brought to the table about not wanting to own and operate was a barrier, but wasn't the wall, uh, that there was another solution. And first and foremost, the solution was who's going to run and own this thing, right? Uh, as you can imagine with the Sanford Center and other things, this is on people's minds in our community appropriately. And so we had to find someone who might be willing to do that. And thankfully this is, uh, when I met Steve, uh, from the YMCA in Fargo. And we'll talk about Steve in a minute, but, uh, their willingness to step up and own and operate this facility in Bemidji is enormous. And by having that happen, uh, it freed us up to get going on the other things that we were start building up again, right? To get to a project that worked. So in a minute, Steve will kind of introduce himself and what the YMCA does. Uh, and, but let me give you a sense of what we're talking about in this wellness center. Uh, roughly a 38, $35 million facility, roughly meaning we're capped at $35 million. We, we know there's a capacity in Bemidji and I think it's $35 million. And I'm sure Steve will talk about that as well. It's roughly 60, actually 60, 65,000 square feet of space. Choices had to be made, right? Everybody in the community had an idea of what they wanted and choices had to be made. But you're going to see a facility, um, that is typical of a YMCA and a wellness center. Things like a large aquatics area, multi-sport, uh, field house, cardio workout space, weights, indoor playground, uh, group fitness, uh, running and walking track and drop in care. Uh, it really, the, the, if you picture yourself a YMCA, it's really a YMCA, right? And when you think about a wellness center, so that went together very nicely. The second thing we've been doing, and this has been big work over the last six months, is trying to figure out how to, how to clean up and provide infrastructure at a reasonable cost to our community. And so that's where we're at today. We've, uh, what we've been able to do is maximize the amount of development space that's possible on the site. Uh, right now, uh, we have three development paths in addition to the YMCA. Now we can have private development on, increase the tax base in our community. And in fact, we're moving in that direction already. We also were able to minimize the amount of cleanup costs by utilizing some of the contaminated materials onsite underneath the YMCA and other places. And we were able to make it fit downtown. Those are really priorities for us, right? Uh, and so we're able to do that. Right now we've, uh, submitted one application to the state of Minnesota that was approved, uh, called the deed redevelopment grant. Oops. Uh, the deed redevelopment grant for $590,000. It was announced today, um, in the paper. The, uh, that's more than we asked for. Uh, that's never happened to me in 37 years of my career with deed. And so it gives an indication of their, what they care about. In addition, we'll be submitting another one called the contamination cleanup grant on November 1st. That will be about $1.4 million more of state funds to help us clean up that site. Ultimately, the power here is we're getting rid of a cleaned, uh, contaminated site in the heart of our town with no infrastructure and putting in infrastructure with, so we have development sites and a cleaned up site and a YMCA to go with it. So it's really been really kind of a cool, powerful thing. This little map gives you a bit of an idea, uh, where the, where the, the YMCA is proposed to be located. If you look on the left, the, the bridge of Urban Avenue Bridge is essentially against the left side of the building. So it really tucks up against the bridge right next to downtown meets Bemidji Brewing, uh, that area. By doing that, uh, we saved a ton of money, one. But secondly, it freed up a development site right on Second Street in Minnesota Avenue, of which a developer has already submitted a letter of interest to do a mixed use development right there. So what we had thought was possible and was going to happen is already starting to happen just with the anticipation of the, of the, um, of the YMCA coming. So last thing, uh, people ask about timelines and I want to share this with you. And then again, like I said, I want Steve to take the most time to introduce the Y to us. But, uh, timeline wise, so again, the redevelopment application was submitted and approved. We'll submit in November again. We will hear in January or February whether that's been approved. I'm fairly confident. This has been a project on the deeds, uh, pipeline of funding since 2013, that they want to fund it. And so we're feeling pretty good about that. If those get approved, you will see some cleanup started and infrastructure, uh, started next, uh, spring, summer. And by the end of summer and fall, we hope to have that all done and potentially breaking ground on a new facility. Uh, and about what a 16 to 18 month period of construction for the YMCA. So you have a feel, uh, for when this is happening. We've had this, um, in our community, uh, conversation about wellness center for so long. Uh, this, we've never gotten this far. And we're in a place now where I believe this, despite all the projects that we proposed over the years, all of which, by the way, I was a part of and I'm getting kind of tired. Um, this one's, this one just feels better, right? It feels like a better fit for our community. It feels like exactly what our community needs right now. So one, I think this ownership is pretty straightforward of the YMCA. This is not going to be publicly owned. This is not going to be publicly operated. This is going to be operated and owned by the YMCA, fairly simple. So I've had questions in the public and of course this is Sanford Center related, but truly is it going to be another Sanford Center? It's not. This is not publicly funded. This is not publicly operated. Uh, we're bringing in a financially strong partner. Uh, and Steve can talk a little bit about that. Um, we have a much better site plan than we had previously, uh, no matter which iteration you're talking about. And finally, the broader community support is pretty substantial right now. I'm hearing from people, uh, people I don't know are approaching me and saying how nice it is that the YMCA is stepping up and coming to our community. And what that means for them and their families is really kind of, it's heartwarming, uh, to be a part of that. And so with that, I do want to introduce Steve. Uh, that's why we're here today. You hear from me enough. Um, let me give you an idea though, why Greater Bemidji picked, uh, the YMCA in Fargo, uh, what's now the YMCA of the Northern Sky. Um, we did an RFP and we got responses, so we had options, right? And there are three things that stuck out, uh, with Steve and his team that I think mattered the most and why we chose them. The first is they're strong, financially strong, right? They have three wellness centers in Fargo. They have a wellness center in, uh, Fergus Falls. They have operations and, uh, all over and they're done very well in that regard. Secondly, they have an experience with Sanford Health, not, and not always easy experience. There's been this partnership that they had to form with Sanford Health, which they're able to bring to our, um, situation here in Bemidji and what that might look like. Uh, another one is, is Steve's organization at the YMCA in Fargo is the largest daycare provider in all of North Dakota. Uh, he has 2,000 daycare slots he's responsible for every year or every day. And so the ability and the interest, his genuine interest in opening a significantly large center here in Bemidji is a nice add-on uh, to what we're talking about here. So it's really a nice fit from that regard. And finally, for me, uh, was when I got to, got to know Steve and his team. Uh, it's really mission focused organization. This is a group, Steve did not have to say yes to this. I mean, that's, he could have said, good luck, find somebody else, do that. But I, I could tell this is about, for him, uh, it's about serving people and serving a community that needs help. And so that's why I'm really excited to introduce to you Steve Smith and let him talk a little bit about what you do.
Thank you. Thanks for having me today. Uh, you know, I'll start with the end of the story. We said yes, but we said no, uh, originally, um, when, uh, Dave approached us. Uh, and we were in the middle of a, a merger with the Fergus Falls YMCA. And, uh, they already had a Y and they were struggling with senior leadership and some challenges. And we were in the middle of that when Dave first approached me and I was like, yeah, we're okay. We've got enough on our plate and here's the reasons why there's enough on our plate. Um, and he kept being persistent and kept showing up in my office, sometimes invited. Um, and, uh, we ended up with a yes, uh, to him and providing the, uh, RFP response. And then thankfully my board in July of this year, uh, said yes and are all in. So we're, we're really thankful for that. Um, the YMCA, so the Y is a worldwide organization that has been around since the 1840s and started in London, England. Uh, can, comes to the US in 1855. Our Y in Fargo is called the Railroad YMCA. We've been a YMCA since 1886. And basically all you see is the YMCA popping up along the rail corridor all the way out to Seattle. And YMCA, basically they're following as they're helping young men at that time, um, live a, uh, more wholesome lifestyle. The reason the Y started, it was started in the industrial revolution as a way to get young men off the street to stop them doing, uh, they'd work 14, 15, 16 hour days and then they would carouse at night. And so the YMCA started as a way to help stop that from happening and live a more wholesome lifestyle. Um, and that has continued through our time today. And so, uh, we've been around since 1886. We own also a resident camp, uh, down near Detroit Lakes area, uh, called Camp Cormorant. It's been around since 1903, um, and one of the earliest YMCA camps in the country. Um, we are blessed to serve. That's why we are here. That's the reason why we're involved and why we ended up ultimately saying yes, uh, to the call from, uh, Greater Bemidji to come on into this project. Um, when you look at a YMCA, we are here to do a mission of, uh, that I won't get into today with all of you. If you want to have that sit down with me, I'd love to share that story with you. But I will say that if you only remember one set of words from us is a, is an equilateral triangle with the word spirit, mind and body on the sides of it. And that equilateral triangle is balanced on its point. And the conceptual idea of our mission statement is that when a person is living their most and strongest life, their spirit, mind and body are in synchronicity and holding on that point. Anytime one of those pieces gets out of the way, we, we all have those moments, right? Where we fall. And so everything that we do in our work is scheduled to, to be focused on that. Um, so when you look at our buildings, you know, we do not look at our buildings as the end all be all to who we are. They're just tools in our tool belt to do the work that we're called to do. And the example that I give is a swimming one because I've been working for the Y nearly for 40 years now. And the idea of a swimming lesson is how I started. And the first time you or a child of yours or a grandchild of yours swam across the deep end of a swimming pool and you get to the other side, right? And the, you sit up on the side and I can guarantee you the following things in that body, mind and spirit story, right? Was the body worked absolutely? How do we know? Well, the child is tired, right? Because they've had it swim a long way. They probably have forgotten to breathe. Um, and they're probably swallowing half the water as they go because their head is too high and their feet are too low. And they're pushing all that water across the pool, but they make it, right? That's a big deal. The mind was worked, how? Well, we want to get our arms out of the water. We got to remember to breathe, right? We've got to do all those types of things. And by the way, we teach water safety and we teach drowning prevention and we teach all those things. That's actually why I started working for the Y all those years ago. I had a friend who passed away from a drowning. And was the spirit worked? Absolutely. That swim instructor swims over to that child as they sit up on the side and there's this celebration moment with this child, right? Hey, great job. You didn't believe you could do it. I told you you could and you did it well done. Way to go, high five, celebration, right? And that child turns around, looks for mom and dad on the pool deck, has a thumbs up moment with them. They might stop at the Dairy Queen or wherever to get their ice cream to celebrate this life-changing moment that the child has. And unfortunately in our communities, not every child gets that opportunity, right? Because there's different reasons. And we preach about this to our staff, that our job is not to judge. That's not why we're here. We're just here to provide every child that opportunity to have that celebration moment, even if mom and dad aren't able to provide it for them themselves. And that's why we do what we do. So, um, we have, uh, followed that mission statement around spirit, mind and body, making sure that kids get that opportunity. Adults get it as well through every group, uh, group exercise class, everything that we do. We, we use that as the crux of our, our work. So if we come to town, once we get the rest of the fundraising, uh, figured out here, when we come to town, we'll put it that way. When we come to town, you know, we're looking forward to obviously bringing this fitness facility and all of those types of things. But we're all looking for other things as well. Um, we're a major food provider, uh, for kids. Um, we, this last year did about 550,000 meals for children. Um, we just started a non-congruent food program, uh, the summer, uh, that went for about six weeks, um, where we were transporting food to rural communities around, uh, uh, North Dakota and Minnesota. Um, and just in five, six weeks, that was about 30,000 meals, um, to, to kids. And so that's a huge deal and we're looking forward to bringing that here and helping out, um, in that area. Um, we will look at childcare at some point. We haven't quite figured that out in this facility, uh, outlay at this particular moment. Um, to kind of give you an idea, 30 to 35% of the children that are in our childcare program and those 2,000 kids that we serve daily are on some sort of financial assistance to, to participate. Um, and that means that parents are at work. Um, and even if they are not at work, we know the child is in a good spot because they're with us. And those spirit, mind and body situations are, are being, um, addressed. Um, we camp, uh, about 30% of our thousand kids that go to camp and do resident camp overnight, uh, are on free, um, uh, usage of our camp. Um, most of those children are foster children, um, because we believe that every child should have the right to have an outdoor experience. And we find that many of these kids show up with nothing except the clothes. Um, and silently and quietly we put out, uh, sleeping bags and we put out swimsuits and we put out these things and nobody knows the difference. The child is the child and the child gets this opportunity to grow on their site. Um, so the work that we do is important and we're, you know, as I have said throughout today, through various meetings, uh, your county, um, and Bemidji as a whole deserves a Y. Um, we believe that it's a community that is, uh, is ripe to be active. We believe that it's an opportunity to really change the, the trajectory of health in this community. And it comes through many, many different versions of the type of work that we do. And we're just scratching the surface by talking about a building today. So again, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I think it was a great, it was a great follow-up to Amy and, and our community health improvement program. This is absolutely a good part of that.
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to this conversation, by the way. We haven't had a chance to talk, but we will talk.
You'll enjoy the conversation. I'll just close with, uh, real quickly, uh, the next, uh, key steps for our community. Uh, the, the, uh, what I'm excited about is it's really in our hands now. And so, uh, we were targeting raising it in addition to Sanford's 10, $10 million and additional $15 million. We've raised nine in our base center campaign, uh, which means we have six left. And so we'll be launching that fundraising campaign to the community, to the general community. I'm excited, uh, because there's a whole lot of interest out there. And so I'm excited to see our, uh, can we step up with that? And the second one tonight, we'll be in front of the city council, talking a little bit about, you know, sources and uses of that cleanup and that infrastructure. Uh, that's a big deal. But if we want to have developable property that's cleaned up adjacent to our downtown, having this vibrant center, um, this is a project we need to get them, uh, and they've been very supportive, by the way. This, the, the council and the staff have been great. And so, uh, those are the next big steps here. Uh, but I think, like I said earlier, we've come a long way and to a point where this is feeling, feeling really good about where it's headed. Happy to answer questions. Any questions for Dave or Steve? Craig?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, Dave, Steve, thank you so much for being willing to bring the YMCA to the Bemidji community and the Greater Bell County community. Um, wondering about making sure that the plans include room for expansion or childcare for other, other things that, um, we hopefully don't get.
Know today, what you need today, right? I mean, obviously, uh, we go into facility. The Y is a phenomenal organization about making the best use of space that we have available to us and figuring out how to add on to it. So we will, we, we don't quite have a final plan as to what this is exactly going to look like. We're relatively close. Um, but we do know that we have some expansion opportunity out to the sides of the facility space, but not a ton because the land is a little landlocked and we're going to be backed up towards the bridge on the backside of the building. But we're pros at this thing and we'll figure that out. Secondarily, we'll look for other land, um, in the community. So we might not necessarily put childcare right on site with us, but find a different place that the, 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 the childcare could be and then work with other partners on that. Um, you know, one of the things that we hear a lot is, okay, here comes another nonprofit, which means we're going to do fundraising. We're going to do all these other things, which are important things. We, you know, um, we consider this, you know, we'll employ probably 100 to 125 staff here locally. Um, most of that part-time. Um, but a typical operation will have about that, that staff level 10-ish, 12-ish will be full-time. Um, and some of those will be doing fundraising work and all of those things. But one of the things that we're a big proponent of is when, when somebody gets a gift that we don't get, we don't look at that and go, we didn't get that gift. All we look at is that's probably floating the boat higher for all of us. And so, um, we'll be doing some work around that and trying to find those partners that can join us on a piece of property that we don't necessarily have to own, but that we're just part, in parcel of with them.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, I remember a few years ago when, when it was first presented to the county board as a, the, in addition to the Sanford Center. And, and I wasn't sold on that idea, but I think today, after today's presentation, you know, is, you know, I'm leaning towards, you know, the, the acceptance of a community center because it sounds like there's so many great things that, that, uh, with, with endless possibilities, you know? Uh, following up with, uh, uh, Amy there with, you know, seeing that there's a need for a community health center and, you know, a need for, for childcare, you know? So I, I think things have worked, you know, in mysterious ways. And maybe, maybe, uh, it didn't work out, you know, a few years ago because, uh, the need just wasn't there, you know, at the time. But now we see the need and, and I'm excited to see, you know, what develops and, and how, um, I can be a partner, you know, in this, uh, thank you.
Steve. I can, I just like to address something. So when I say I'm excited about the conversation that I need to have, um, the reason is, is that, uh, my background is around, I, I was the chair for the Healthiest Manitowoc County Committee, uh, in Manitowoc, Wisconsin, um, before I moved here, uh, seven, eight years ago. And, um, so I am all about community health and I am all about the markers around community health that change with the work that the Y does along with other health partners, right? Whether it's health departments, whether it's the Sanford or somebody else. There's a lot of ways to get this work done. Now, one of the things that we know is that the Y is the least, uh, like, think about it. If you go and work out at a health, uh, at a, at a, at a hospital, you, you kind of probably are, uh, that might actually give you more indigestion than you walked in with that day, right? Um, and might not be the most comfortable place to be engaged. But the Y is like, hey, if you walk in the front door and all you can do is walk to the back door, touch the door and walk back out. And believe me, we've, I've got stories around that if you want to ever talk about it. Um, that's great and we're going to help you. But each one of those touches leads to a better county health ranking and, you know, just floats that boat again. And so we are here to make that difference.
Commissioner, uh, to your point about timing, I've been doing this a long time and I think 37 years. And I am truly believe that it, there's a right time, right? For projects and this just does feel like the right time. Not that I wasn't a big proponent previously, of course I was, uh, but this one had, does feel differently. And in part because of what Steve brings to the table, I think is really powerful today. Just so you give an idea about the, the amount of commitment he has. He came in yesterday and met with the school board, or I'm sorry, that was supposed to be with the schools. Uh, today we started in the morning, um, where did we start, Steve? Boys and Girls Club, then we went to the Northwest Indian CDC, then we went to the Day Center. Uh, then we went to Sanford Health, uh, then we went to the Senior Center and then we came here. And then we got city council tonight. Uh, that's just one day. What I, the reason I bring this up is there's a lot of community partners out there that there's some opportunity for significant partnership. Boys and Girls Club is a great example. Bemidji State University Field House is a great example. Steve spent a half a day with them last time he was. Steve spent a half a day with them last time he was here. The School District's a great example, Community Ed's a great example, all of these. And and tomorrow we'll meet with the city staff, particularly the Parks and Rec staff. All of these are great opportunities for Steve to to partner up, uh to really exponentially make a difference uh in our community.
You have other questions for Dave or Steve? I'll just close by saying I got a chance to meet Steve a couple of different times and a couple of different occasions and and he's actually as genuine as he appears to be. So thank you for your commitment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, next on the agenda, the Public Transit Board update. Um, Tom, did you want to take that or?
Well, Commissioner, uh, I was going to rely on you to do it since we chaired the meeting, but I can do it if you'd rather.
I can if you want.
Okay. Why don't you?
All right. So this all came up when we were doing committee assignments and everybody's kind of digging in and trying to figure out what their committees are and what they're for. Um, Craig and I looked at each other and said, I guess we're on the Transit Board. Um, so I asked Craig because he'd been here before, oh, so when do you meet? And he goes, well, we haven't. So that sort of started a whole bunch of questions about, well, what does this board do? Um, we started diving in. There was a misconception at at least early on of my part, I don't know about Craig, but I thought we were the board for Paul Bunyan Transit. We're not, that has nothing to, we have nothing to do with Paul Bunyan Transit. Paul Bunyan Transit is a a nonprofit business that was organized in February of nineteen ninety-nine. And in June of nineteen ninety-nine, the city and the county went together and formed the Joint Powers Agreement. The reason for that is at the time, each had their own transit. The county had a bus, the city had one or two buses, whatever they had. Um, and it seemed to be inefficient and there seemed to be some dollars that were available to state that were being left on the table. And so by forming this joint powers, we were able to take advance advantage of some grant money, um, some program money to make a better uh transportation system in the Bemidji area. Um, and so that board was formed. What we find out through a bunch of investigation, we had a lot of help from Katie Knowlton, the city attorney. She did a great job in doing a bunch of investigation. Um, and then Leslie Gruber from Paul Bunyan Transit had been there from the very beginning. And so she was able to provide some helpful insight. Um, and so it was about two thousand and three when um the funding sources changed. And now the Paul Bunyan Transit was able to get the money directly from the state and it really didn't need this joint powers anymore. And so the joint powers, instead of meeting monthly, started meeting quarterly. And then instead of meeting quarterly, they started meeting semi-annually. And then it went to annually and then it went to why the hell are we meeting? Because we didn't really have anything to do with it. Um, and so we looked at what what are our, what's our next step then? Um, and so we consulted with Katie, uh, the city attorney. Um, and uh we looked at the joint powers agreement. Uh, one of the things that one party, the the two parties, the city and the county, one thing you could do is uh uh put a one hundred and eighty-day notice in that you're going to withdraw from the joint powers agreement. Or you could just, if you, if both entities said, y- you know, we don't need this anymore, we can just dissolve it with a joint resolution. And so after a lot of discussion, about an hour's worth of discussion about, is there anything that we really need to do as this joint powers board? And and let's just keep in mind that we all still felt like transportation's an important issue. That wasn't the issue, the issue was, did we need this joint powers board? And and so the consensus was um that, and and we we voted and and the consensus was that we really should just pursue a joint um a re- a joint resolution to dissolve. Uh, and so that will be, that that's what we're, what's one we're going to talk about, the city's going to talk about it. And again, I will just remind, remind everybody that it's not about transportation. It's about, does this, is this the right vehicle to do it? Um, and so uh Paul Bunyan Transit, I think, has been, you know, obviously COVID hit it hard. Um, they're recovering from that, but they're recovering nicely. I have, I think from from all things I can tell, unless somebody knows differently, Paul Bunyan Transit has been doing a great job. Um, and this board hasn't been meeting anyway. And so it's just sort of like, that's one of those things, sitting on the books, it really jolly just doesn't need to be there. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Did I miss anything, Craig or Tom?
Mr. Chair, that you didn't necessarily miss anything, I don't think. But um, we also had HRDC at our meeting and there are some things that the community, I think Leslie um is, they're going to come up with a report um at some point and give us more information uh explaining why they can't do fixed routes. Because the the Paul Bunyan Transit is um regulated and their their money coming from the state, they have rules they have to to apply or, you know, or or comply with, I should say. And, you know, that's why they can't do a fixed route is because of the the rules that they're under. However, HRDC has the RTCC, the Regional Transportation Coordinating Council, that has more flexibility with the money that they have. And so they're going to communicate and work with Paul Bunyan Transit to try to fill in some of those gaps and and make a better. Um, the city and the county are both committed to improving the the transit in our county and in the city, of course. And so um, nothing is negative about us um having this resolution to dissolve this board. It's actually a positive because the way that it's structured at this point, the the probably, or the not Paul Bunyan, but the Public Transit Board would actually, essentially, if we kept it as it is today, it would be in competition with the Paul Bunyan Transit, which we don't want. And we want to um do what we can to get reports from Paul Bunyan Transit Assist them as well as HRDC in order to make the the transit as good as we can make it in Beltrami County.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Tom, anything else to add?
Uh, no, sir, I think those summaries are very good. Thank you.
Uh, questions from other commissioners about that? So I think what we'll be doing, Katie is, has been charged with drafting the joint resolution of dissolution. And at some point, whenever she gets that done, it'll probably appear in our packets and then we can act on it. Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, before before it's uh submitted for for action, can the county attorney review it? Uh, and and give give his blessing, you know, I mean, I I get, you know, the city wants to do what the city attorney wants to do. I I feel more comfortable doing, you know, uh, if the county attorney reviewed it as well.
Dave said he would do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that, moving on. Sorry to make you guys wait, Joe and Dave. But here we are, nevertheless, we're at uh the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Designation. And we have Captain Joe Kluzik and Sergeant Dave Hart with us today. Welcome, guys.
Thanks for having us.
We get to see Joe quite often, we never get to see Dave. Hey, Dave?
That's on purpose.
Um, I have a PowerPoint that was last minute.
Dave, you're supposed to supply small talk while we're waiting.
We'll talk about the beavers or?
Not after this week.
Yeah.
Our whole department, half of it, it's today is, we're doing our evening firearms. So, and it's supposed to be inclement weather and it's just gorgeous outside. We had to leave that early, you know, so.
So while we're waiting for the PowerPoint, did you guys actually like drive out to the White House to get this petition signed or did that, was that?
No, they shut us down for that. No, we wish.
We were persistent though, which is, uh, this is the second time we petitioned um the Office of National Drug Control Policy for this designation. And uh, we were getting a lot of support, um, both from the the HIDA Director from North Central HIDA um and the US Attorney's Office uh to get this designation, so.
So, you know, maybe uh Joe, we get to see you often, we understand your position with the Sheriff's Department. But Dave, we don't get to see you very often. Could you just maybe uh explain to the people that are listening and to the commissioners what your yes, the draft, the task force?
Like you said, I'm a sergeant with the Beltrami County Sheriff's Office and I am the current commander of the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force, uh, which is a multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional drug and violent crime task force. Um, set up per Minnesota statute as a violent crime enforcement team. Currently, there's about twenty-one, uh, they call it B-Sets throughout the state of Minnesota. So our B-Set services Kuchiching, Beltrami, Cass, Hubbard and Menomone Counties, the city of Bemidji, Park Rapids and the reservations of White Earth and Leech Lake. So each uh member agency on the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force um designates one or two individuals uh to work as agents on the drug task force um that I supervise doing those uh investigations. On top of um obviously doing drug and violent crime investigations throughout the task force area. Our agents are commonly tasked as kind of force multipliers for other agencies. When they have serious events or serious investigations come up, we can designate our resources, equipment and so forth um to help our members, member agencies out in those investigations.
Um, do we get, does the Paul Bunyan Task Force get funding from state or federal government?
Well, so um both state and federal, um, it's kind of mixed funds through the Office of Justice Programs. Um, you know, there, there's a bag of money and and we have to, it's a two-year grant cycle. Um, so we do our RFP, you know, every two years, um, request for funds. We've gotten the same amount over the last couple of years. And then next year, there's going to be another, a new task force assigned to the state. So that funding might decrease a little bit. So, you know, with this HIDA designation that we'll talk about, that'll be um definitely a good thing for us, so.
How long have you been on the task force?
A long time. So I started in two thousand and sixteen um as an agent. After being on the task force for a couple of years, I was moved up to a team leader position on the task force. Uh, worked until two thousand and twenty-two when Captain Kluzik was promoted. I took over as the as the commander. So it's been approximately just under two years now.
Does that uh leading that task force, is that rotated all or is, or I mean, so with all the counties involved, is it always a Beltrami County?
It doesn't have to be, but it it has historically been, yes, for for many years. And, you know, the big part of that is Beltrami County is our fiscal agent as well. So it it works well and that means if, you know, somebody else was, you know, had applied for the commander position from one of our member agencies and was appointed as the commander by the board. Um, our fiscal agent probably would have moved with with that agent at their member agency or their county, I should say.
So unlike a a township officer, um, where they have to drag you in and say, you will do this, you you actually, you you volunteered to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And unlike, and unlike them, they they either have to move or die in order to get off that, I I, how does that fit for you?
I I I seriously enjoy, you know, this line of work. Um, one of the, from my experience, you know, becoming a a law enforcement officer, one of the things that's kind of a hindrance is, you know, you're you're kind of struck to, you're you're stuck in these geographic boundaries, right? Whether you're a city officer or you're county deputy. Fortunately, we have a big county and we're able to to get around, our deputies are able to get around and work um quite a bit. But, you know, these criminals, especially organized drug trafficking organizations that we're going to talk about, don't adhere to boundaries. And if we're going to be successful in combating um these organizations, we have to be able to move and flow, you know, throughout the state and throughout the country as as we need to. And work with, you know, other state, uh, local and federal, federal uh partners to uh to kind of dismantle these drug trafficking or organizations.
I I think that'd be a great future work topic, work session topic. If you wouldn't mind at some point to um come in and just talk to us about Paul Bunyan Drug Force, Task Force.
Anytime, yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
So we were asked uh by Sheriff Riggs to come in and talk about this HIDA designation. Um, and kind of what it was and how we got here and what it consists of and what to expect. We've had several questions asked of us. And what HIDA is, it's a, it was created through the United States Office of National Drug Control Policy in nineteen eighty-eight uh under the Anti-Drug Abuse Act. And it provides federal resources to counties. And when we say counties, this is not Beltrami County as an entity. This is a geographical location of Beltrami County, that's just the way HIDA works. So this petition we did, Beltrami County was the applicant. Uh, I had originally drafted the first petition. Dave did most of it, the second time we worked together on it, uh, seeking support uh with all the law enforcement throughout um Beltrami County, including Leech Lake, Red Lake, the city of Bemidji, Black Duck. To touch on the support we got, it was actually really great. We got uh was that, when we were first asked to apply through HIDA, they said, we think this would be good for Beltrami County. And I said, okay, great, what do we got to do? I'm going to write in grants, I'll try. And they said, well, normally the petitions are twenty-five to fifty pages. And I'm like, ah, you know, maybe we don't need to do that this time. That sounds like a heavy lift. Uh, and it was about twenty-five pages of of a narrative, but the the amount of letters of support was a a big thing. And Tina Smith, Amy Klobuchar, Tim Walz's office. Um, and and we didn't just look at local resources or law enforcement, but the Boys and Girls Club, the school districts, uh, our partnering law enforcement agencies.
United Way.
The United Way, Face It Together, um, uh, local uh treatment facilities, peer support diversion programs. Everybody uh supported this, so it was really great. Uh, HIDAs are located in all the fifty states as well as Puerto Rico, um, and the District of Columbia and the Virgin Islands. And its monies set aside or provided to go after people who are coming here to poison our community. This is not monies for patrol officers to conduct additional uh enforcement efforts on, you know, drug users. These are people who are coming here trafficking drugs to poison our community. Um, this is the map of all the HIDA counties in the United States. Um, the the different, different HIDAs, the thirty-three HIDAs are different colors, so.
So with that, um, we're going to be assigned to the North Central HIDA. That includes both the states of Minnesota and Wisconsin with the head co- headquarters being over in Milwaukee. Um, eight counties in Wisconsin, there was seven counties in Minnesota. Um, so with the addition of us and both Stearns County got the designation uh this year as well. So this is obviously a current map of what uh North Central HIDA will look like or does look like.
So this twenty-seven fifty-five page petition that I talked about, it basically boiled down to four questions that we had to answer. And this is how it's written up, but do we have a drug trafficking problem in our area? Are we using resources to combat that problem already? Um, is this problem a significant problem to our community? And would an increase in money help us uh to combat that problem? So it's four questions and we'll go through each one of them here. I'll take number one. Um, does the area have a significant, is it a significant center of illegal drug production, manufacturing, importation and distribution? This Bemidji is a hub city for drugs, as it's a hub city for economics and medical and education. People come here to get controlled substances. It's a destination for traffickers and I'm going to, I'm going to show us another slide here shortly on that. Uh, and we were able to show some upward trends in seizures and arrests uh to show that the drug problem has been growing over the years. And I'm going to touch on a case uh And I'm going to touch on a case, Omar Beasley. These are just some pictures we had. The upper left-hand picture, that was a four, over a four-pound cocaine seizure we had two years ago. That's two kilos. Those are kilos, like you would see in the movie, bricks of cocaine that were sent up here. And we got them in the city of Bemidji. The lower right, that's about nineteen pounds of methamphetamine that were seized coming up here. The, the cocaine came from California. The methamphetamine was coming out of Illinois. The lower left-hand corner is five pounds of heroin that we seized several years ago, actually, it's been. And that was again, coming from Chicago area. So we are seeing large seizures in this area. Large, people are coming up here with large amounts. And if they're coming up here with that much, they're obviously selling that much in our community.
So with this HIDA designation and with some other, I've done some other speaking engagements recently. One would be in opioid community forum down in Walker. I kind of wanted to, to show and reflect just kind of where we, where we were at, what, you know, where we've come and where we're at now, obviously. So just pulling the numbers going back to two thousand and eighteen, which a lot of these were numbers that we touched on as well in the petition. But it's, it's pretty substantial, you know, to show since two thousand and eighteen that we seized almost twenty pounds of opioids, which includes both synthetic opioids such as fentanyl and heroin, and then transition from the prescription pills to the fentanyl crisis we see today. And showing, you know, breaking that down with, with the street value of those drugs is, is pretty alarming. So with the opioids, you know, it's about one point four million. Methamphetamine is always going to be, we call it king. Methamphetamine is always going to be king, no matter what. We seize, we seize way more methamphetamine than anything else. But since two thousand and eighteen, again, almost a hundred and thirty pounds of methamphetamine with an estimated street value just under four million dollars. I mean, that, that's significant. And we've had a pretty good trend, you know, in recent years, and we'll touch a little bit more on this. But the additional support we've gotten from the U.S. Attorney's Office, you know, over the last three, you know, three years for sure, has been great. Minnesota Department of Corrections has, definitely is moving away from a punitive justice system to a rehabilitative system. So just with an act passed last year in two thousand and twenty-three, you know, inmates, you know, sentenced to DOC are seen fifty percent good time. So they're only serving fifty percent of their time incarcerated. You know, the rest of the time, they can serve out on probation. But with that, you know, there hasn't been additional resources for additional probation officers and, and more supervision on that point. So from a personal point of view, I just feel like, you know, several things that are happening, that's kind of setting the system up for failure. On top of that, you know, there's programs in DOC called challenge incarceration programs, like boot camp, a lot of people have heard about. Back in the day, when I first started, people, if we sent someone to prison on a first-degree drug crime, which is the highest, if they got the chance to do a boot camp program and get out early, they could do that. But they got that one opportunity. If we busted them again after they got out, they weren't eligible again for boot camp. Now we're seeing individuals able to do boot camp programs several times. And we're kind of, you know, called banging our head on the table because we're investigating the same people over and over and over and sending them back to prison and tying up a lot of our resources.
That four-pound cocaine seizure, that was his third time that our task force had dealt with him on a first-degree or higher sale. We had done him in two thousand and nineteen. He had about a hundred grams of heroin that he had brought up from California. And then a couple of years prior to that, he had been caught with a bunch of oxycodone pills that he came up. So the third time, he was just recently sentenced to ten years in federal prison, so. I'm going to touch on a case here, Omar Beasley, and it kind of sets up the opioid pandemic epidemic in, in Beltrami County. Omar Beasley was a guy from Michigan who came up here and he was selling heroin in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. And it was a, it was a large case. It was a large conspiracy case. They indicted forty-one people, including Omar. Omar was sentenced to three hundred months in prison for trafficking the drugs up here. The unique thing about this case was not only that there was forty-one people indicted, but the link that it has created to this neighborhood in Detroit. I've been, I got on the task force right after the wrap-up of this case, and it was still going through the court case. And since then, I can think of at least probably eight to ten groups from the same neighborhood tied to Omar Beasley, who have came up here and targeted our community. They come to Beltrami County, they come to Bemidji, they come to Red Lake, they come to Leech Lake, they come to White Earth to, to prey on our community because the money's there. It's a lucrative business. There's a lot of people that suffer from addiction. And it was interesting, while we were looking over, you know, creating this petition, hit it, the next one. I found a book that Beasley wrote. And he, he says in the book, he says, and, and he kind of talks about, and he goes back from first person to third person. He says, "In this book right here shows my deep apologies to the Native Americans for selling poison in their communities. As my eyes water and the tears flow down, I'd never want to see the youth in trouble." Those are words from the guy who was here poisoning it. And that's what these people do is they come up here, and this is the kind of guy that HIDA is created to take down. You can run this one.
So question two, obviously, you know, HIDA wants to know the, the amount of resources that we've and, and efforts we've done to try and, you know, address the problem already, which is important. So with the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force, most of the stat, you know, for statistical reasons, the stats used for this petition were stats generated by the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force. Like I said, we cover a ten thousand square mile area, which is a huge area geographically. But it's also important, like Joe mentioned, how Beltrami County and the city of Bemidji is a hub, both for economics and, and other purposes, but it's become a hub for controlled substances, where, you know, controlled substances are coming here and then going outward from here to other areas of our, of our communities. That, where I was going with this. That it's become a hub. So most of the statistics that were used are the statistics that the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force receives. A lot of those seizures are, are tied to Beltrami County and the city of Bemidji. There's great work, obviously, going on everywhere, but the majority of the larger seizures are happening right here in Beltrami County. Another purpose of HIDA is to strengthen relationships at, you know, the local, state, and federal level. We've been very fortunate here in Beltrami County. We have an FBI task force here in Bemidji, the FBI Headwaters Safe Trails Task Force. Most of my agents, including myself, are federally cross-deputized with the FBI, which gives us the resources that we need to, to do these federal investigations and, and refer cases federally. But with that, we'll have some additional resources to kind of strengthen some of those relationships. One being that all these HIDAs have investigative support centers. And we'll have obviously direct access to that investigative support center, with our closest one being in Minneapolis, that we're going to be able to share and receive pretty real-time information with other HIDAs all over the country regarding stuff that we're, that we're seeing, or if we have investigations that are tied to other areas of the country. One of my first, in two thousand and sixteen, one of my first, my first federal investigation included a couple individuals from Red Lake. This is a time where, you know, the Red Lake Reservation didn't have their own drug task force set up yet. They were kind of in the infancy stage of learning kind of how these investigations needed to work. And again, through the partnership with Beltrami County Sheriff's Office, the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force and FBI Task Force, we assisted in that investigation. It was someone that, again, we continued to investigate. We continued to investigate some of these people until we did get some federal indictments. So these are just some pictures. One of the areas where we're doing some controlled buys on that investigation, two thousand and six, was the Red Bee dumps on the reservation. Funny story is, two of the FBI agents thought it'd be fun to dress up in ghillie suits and go into the woods and take pictures while the controlled buy was taking place, not realizing the amount. And I'm sure Commissioner Sumner can contest this, but the amount of bears that are at, you know, some of these sites, I would have been a little bit nervous if I was them in the woods and I'd, bears looking at me from the dumpsters, but, yes.
Sorry, I, we're, we're running really long.
Sure.
And, and we're supposed to be on, at five o'clock for the board meeting, and I didn't know.
You guys just want to go right into questions?
Well, I, I didn't want to interrupt because I think this is really good stuff. And I, I wonder if we could have you guys come back to, to finish this up, because I, I want to see this. I think we all want to see it. It's a great presentation, but I, unfortunately, we're running short of time.
More than happy to.
Yeah.
Would that, Tom, could you get that on the schedule?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's a couple of options you have. You could, you could add this to your regular meeting if you'd like.
Do that.
Or we can stop here, take a break, and then have them come back at the next meeting, which will be in about three weeks. Four weeks, almost four weeks.
I, I think it would, it'd be great if we just added it to the regular session.
Okay.
Would that be okay, guys? Hang in there. Give it, give us a quick break and then we'll come back and start the regular meeting.
Yeah.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry I interrupted, but. Okay, then we'll, work session will be adjourned and we'll come back.